All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this budget workshop to order. And everybody has in front of them the, as of yesterday afternoon, this is just the 12th fund, okay? And what I did was, I took, I'm gonna go through, y'all sat and listened to everybody that was asking for everything, okay? First thing in here is it's got a 5% across the board raise, all right? So that's partying here, and if y'all remember, that cost us about $520,000. So everybody, if we follow this budget, I'm just telling y'all, this is not final, this is for y'all to look at, I just needed to give y'all something to look at. What are you drinking?
Hey, look. I share a bit.
Did we have a coffee machine down here?
Yeah, that's exactly why I don't let you hook on there.
Woo! My wife loves me.
Oh, that's awesome. Jeez, she doesn't like the rest of us, huh? Dang it.
They are quite the lot of way to hook on.
So what this has in it is 5% across the board, and then let's just kinda run down, we're in here, there's a $1 increase for the HR clerk position in Human Resources. Loopy, if y'all remember, last year we gave every, we took all the non-elected people and took them up to the elected people's salary.
Department head.
Department heads, and somehow we missed Loopy. So this gets Loopy up to the rest of them. In the district attorney's office, Mark Haby asked for increases in salaries for his people, which 5% is what we did, but those three people that he had working, doing the same job as the other two, that were $3,000 a year or less than the other three, we make them all equal now.
They're up to 36,000.
They're up to 36, yeah, they were, these three were at 33, and that's because they came from the old county attorney's office, at a lower salary than what the district attorney was paying. So now we're equalizing all three of them. We are adding a civil attorney in at $85,000. And then on the county court at law, if you remember, Cashin asked to move his two girls to the middle of that salary range, which would've been Shannon at 66 and Janet at 57, and...
You got 47 here.
I didn't. Well, I, he asked, I didn't say I gave it to him, all right? But I did, I did, and I'm gonna, the next three, the county court at law, the district court, and the court administration, all of those I raised up, and let me tell you what's getting ready to happen. Diane Belichick is getting ready to leave. She's gonna become a counselor. So Danny's gonna be looking for a new court coordinator, and she and Shanna, I think, should be at the same salary, because they both do roughly the same job, although Shanna does the court recording too. But Danny's gonna need to hire a court reporter, I mean, I'm sorry, a court coordinator, and in the areas, for example, I checked on Ruby's brother, Mateo, works for Kendall County, for their district court, and, because it'd be great if we could coerce him to come back, except he makes too much money, he's making $78,000 a year in Kendall County, so I think we're gonna need to get quality people, we raised them up a little bit, to get them there.
How much was this, was, did this raise amount to the county court at law?
3,000.
3,000 for both?
Yeah. They were at 57 and 44, okay? And I got a feeling that amongst all of those, there's gonna be some movement, because Danny's gonna need to hire somebody now, whether he hires from within, or if he can find somebody from outside, that's, 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 we don't know, but he is gonna need to find somebody. And to keep, since Jennifer is in, and Jessica are kinda in the same world of work as they are, I wanna keep them in the same area, so I didn't take them to the number, but I thought it'd be good to bump them up, just to keep, keep them all in the same ranges. So they're happy when Keith takes over. And he needs happy people. So the extension office, I don't have it on here, but if you remember, the extension office asked us to move the travel budget in just straight into salary, which was really not a big change in anything, other than we just put it in salary and changed our travel. The auditor's office, we threw that grant, we are getting a new person, so it doesn't cost the county anything, it's gonna be paid for out of the grant, but that's in here. Constables. Constables is something we need to talk about, we had a, I know we had a lot of conversation last time, Jake, constable from Precinct 2s came in and gave us a bunch of numbers, y'all seen a bunch of numbers. I did nothing on the constables, except one thing, I gave Precinct 2 an additional $5,000 in travel allowance, I do not, I left all their salaries the same, I gave him five. Now, that's up for discussion for y'all, what we do with the rest of them, or how you wanna deal with it.
I would really hope he got more than five out of what he presented. I mean, he's the only one that even carried.
I'm open for discussion, I...
He's the only one that even walked in and carried.
I know.
And I think he showed, especially with the report that the auditor gave, he is going beyond what he's called a duty. Is it, does he get recognized for that? I hope so, because he's the only law enforcement I got. I would recommend giving him Ken.
Ken?
I would recommend him going from four units down, cutting the number of units, still doing the same thing, it's not a full-time operation. And like you said, you're gonna wave up and beyond what the job description calls for. And I don't think...
I mean, when he got a guy, ran it a quarter million dollars a year.
You can't, you can't base...
Quarter million dollars a year?
You can't base what he's doing on, I mean, what is, what he's doing on the performance of everybody.
I think he got to, especially in the daytime.
You know, I appreciate the fact that he's out there doing what he's doing. It's, you know, he could be like some of the other constables who don't do this, who don't go out and patrol and write tickets and things of that nature. But at the same time, I think that we need to look at this budget, and this is my last one, I don't think I voted for two or three, but this is my last one, I think we need to look at the whole picture, you know, the folks out there that are paying these taxes, the ones that are fighting to basically make it, folks on the fixed incomes who are gonna be taxed out of their house in a couple of years if it keeps going like it is. And I think that with those folks out there tightening their belts and cutting some of their fluff, we need to do the same thing. And the constable, I think you're opening a can of worms when you give him one something and the other one's nothing, because their argument's gonna be, I'm doing what's required of me. And if you're gonna do him this way, you need to do us that way, or you're, you know, and I understand where you're coming from, Larry. I've talked to Chris about what he does for real, and slowing the trucks down, and that's good, but if he wants to be the full-time policeman, maybe he's got some openings, we've got six openings here. That way you know how much pay he gets. He gets all the benefits he's getting now, insurance, gets his wife, whether he's married, I don't know.
That's not the problem. If he goes to the full-time position, Sheriff Department, I'm gonna have nobody. And we're sitting here and you wanna blame the whole budget, because I wanna give him extra $5,000?
No, no, no.
That's exactly what he said, he raised the taxes too much, when we just give away a quarter million dollars? All I mentioned, $5,000 more? And he says, we don't wanna raise the taxes and give him more? We don't need to be looking at the whole budget, if we're gonna be looking at the whole budget, let's wipe out everything he dislocated, let's go for it. I'm good with that.
The, the situation with the other employees, you know, I can understand the need or the want to keep the experience, the good employees, ones and all to do it, and try to keep them here. If they leave, they're gonna go for more money.
Except they wouldn't come.
At the same, at the same time, the position that they, if, you know, if they leave, it's gonna create a position that someone else can get it to, who probably, you know, they don't know as much, but Arnold Palmer didn't know how to play golf until they started. So the fact that these people are gonna leave, but they don't get any more money, or they're gonna go somewhere for more money, but at the same time, there's people that could probably fill that position for what is being paid. And I'm just saying, you know, overall, Larry, you know, I got no problem with Sobelski. I know he's doing, like you said, he's probably the only thing he's got over there.
Well, yeah.
The one we hired for traffic enforcement, I haven't seen him yet, and I'm sure, it must be counting, and I'm sure he's busy doing something somewhere, but I think that maybe the sheriff's focus ought to be on something like that, traffic enforcement, and they can take care of a lot of these problems. But it seems like right now, the focus of the sheriff's department, and Randy's not here, and I'll tell him, you know, in his face, in fact, we need to go take the ride sometime this week, that, you know, his guys need to be a little more proactive when it comes to traffic enforcement and things of that nature, because right now, all they're focusing on is, let's chase this car for a little bit longer. And that needs to be done. But I think that we need to refocus some of their duties, you know, we're gonna give him six more people and some brass who aren't gonna get out of writing tickets, who aren't gonna get out of the force of law, they're gonna shut, they're gonna, you know, I guess, another way to put it, they're gonna shut the paper, but they're gonna, they're gonna try to spin around his office where the paperwork and the case he can get to court and tie it around. But the outside focus is what we need, and as a result of Sobelski's efforts, you know, he's far outshining the others. I got nothing wrong with it, like I said, but we are gonna experience a problem when the other three constables come in here and say, why not me?
What are they gonna do, less than, less than nothing? What exactly are they gonna do? They haven't done nothing.
They only done what the job description calls for, and I think Sobelski can do the same thing if he wanted to, but he's not that kind of guy.
They've done nothing.
I understand that, Larry, don't you mind?
When we sit here and listen to them beg and talk during these campaigns, well, I'm gonna do this, this, and this, and this, the one you got down there affiliated for hasn't done nothing.
He, uh...
And I wish he had showed up the other day, because I'd tell him that, but he done nothing.
He's done what his job description requires.
Nothing.
And when I sat down with him and talked to him about mileage and things of that nature, he didn't like the math, but that's...
If this whole thing boils down to, we're gonna save the taxpayers by not giving him extra $5,000, that's why this completely happened.
Come on, Larry.
Yeah, 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 that's where I'm gonna vote then. That's what y'all want, that's what?
I am, I'm glad that we didn't necessarily raise anybody's salary, because I look at this like it's a position that we're budgeting for, and it look kinda like commissioners as an elected position, so if Tim is, makes a good case, and which Sobelski did, I mean, there's gotta be some way to compensate for what he's doing, even if it is above and beyond. You hate for, you hate to say, stop doing all that, we're not gonna do any extra, but when you raise the salary, you've now made Precinct 4 or Precinct 2 constable's salary this much, so when he's no longer in office, somebody else is, what happens to that salary? We've got it. You know, they are, the salaries, in my mind, of elected officials in a position should be the same, unless, like with commissioners, if you could differentiate, hey, David's, David's doing a way better job than those other three commissioners, let's make his salary more. Well, if I'm doing a much better job, we might feel like, gosh, we gotta compensate him some way, but I don't know that salary's the way to do it, maybe mileage is the way to do it. I don't know.
I'm fine with that.
I don't know what the answer is, but you see my point?
And that's why I did it in mileage, because if you heard him talk, yes, he's out there, he's, he, the question is, do you wanna promote mediocrity, or do you wanna promote somebody that's rewarding people for doing a good, a better job? So he's got expenses for cars, he's paying insurance and fuel and all those things for more than one car.
Is he, so he's sharing this mileage amount with the other?
The other, yeah, all those patrols, he's gotta pay for that out of his money. So his $1750 a month covers insurance on those cars, it covers his gas, so I, you know, I don't have a problem going to 10. Actually, I had it at 10, and then I thought, no, I'm gonna put it at 5, and I'm just gonna let y'all tell me what to do, because this is gonna be a little bit contentious, but at the same time, I think it's extremely obvious that JP 2 does, he does more than the other three put together.
Yes.
Without, without a doubt, and so the question is, and I think he should be rewarded for that, because I don't want him to go back and not do that job.
Well, the thing is, he's not only in Precinct 2, I have people, very strange, everybody says, well, I saw your constable in a black car out here, that's not my constable, I'm a Precinct 2 constable.
Yeah.
So he's patrolling more his district.
So I'm fine with that, so how do we handle when the other JP's come in?
Constables.
Next, I'm sorry, constables come in next month and say, well, I made four traffic stops this month.
I think they have to prove some history.
Prove they're gonna do it.
Prove some history.
If not, they all start off the same. I got a feeling Sobelski, he don't want to go up the job, he is tickled with what he's doing, he loves what he's doing, he loves going to parades, he loves going to funerals, I've seen him in a bunch of funeral possessions, he enjoys doing that, he gonna go where, and far as I'm concerned, he's gonna be constable as long as he wants to be called.
So here's the, here's the, one of the things that I wanna get accomplished today is, we have to solidify all elected officials' salaries today, 'cause I've sent that letter out. Jennifer has to send that letter out, okay? And we have to publish in the paper, we gotta do all those things that are done, and so today, when we walk out of here today, I would like to have that finalized. The rest of this, we're gonna meet again? I know, it's not, but I do have to get the elected officials.
I just, I'm worried, I worry about the salary discrepancy, not necessarily the mileage so much, but the salary.
We're leaving the salary discrepancy.
I know, I know, but if we have to certify that, if we're gonna leave that the same, that's fine.
But the problem is, mileage goes, everybody's mileage gets thrown into the loop when they publish it.
So the next person that runs for that office is...
His salary will be the same.
His salary, but is his mileage gonna be the same as everybody else's, or is his mileage, I'm gonna run for the position that has the higher mileage.
I think that would be...
Or does it come back down equal the next time?
I think that's up to the court, but I think if that person comes in and wants to go, I knew Sobelski's gonna, then you reward him.
Why don't they do?
If he doesn't, if he just wants to do the standard job, then you start him at what everybody else is at.
Start him at equal.
I would tell him that it's gonna be what everybody else is at, but if he does what Sobelski does, then you take it up.
Okay.
To what it was.
I agree with that.
So, so I, I will, I agree that he should be more than five.
I take camp yesterday at 1:30, I had trouble on the new road, we just got through Salem, the Lower Coss Road, at 3 o'clock, his door, writing tickets, he got one at 80 miles an hour and a 45. That was in two hours after I take it.
We've had zero in an hour.
I believe so.
And...
I mean, that shouldn't be, I wish we could pay these, everybody more to go out and help us, right, throw these people down. That's the problem, it's not shuttles no more, it's speeders.
You know, to what Jerry said, though, the other, the other three, it didn't used to be this way, because we used to have a whole lot more activity from the constable and into his years past, but they're doing what their job description is, so somebody that's doing way beyond, like Sobelski...
Yeah, if they call it to the ranks, next year, give it to them. If they're showing they're doing more next year, we got the room here to give it to them. I'm good with that.
Well, they're actually paying for their own increase, because the tickets they write is, goes straight to that court, goes straight, comes into the county. So what they do, do, is it's better than wash for us, so...
Okay, I agree with that.
Okay. All right, so I will raise it to 10, okay? Let's go on to the sheriff's office. The sheriff asks, okay, let's go backwards. Darcy and Reuben came in and they asked for cars, right? And we don't have, we're not gonna go out and buy a car, that's a $35,000 purchase, because we, Keith, help me out on this, we got those other eight cars now in order?
Yes, sir, yes.
And they should be coming in in the next four months or so?
Yes, yeah, right.
And the sheriff has committed that, two of those cars that he takes out of service, one will go to Darcy, one will go to Reuben. So he'll just, they'll have, I guess, Tahos unmarked, but they'll, the Tahos, just so y'all know, there's very few cars left right now that have more than 130,000 miles on them, all right? If you remember years ago, they were running them at 160 and 170, but through the process of what we've done, we have now got, almost every car is going to be relatively new, because we just keep flipping them out. And so the eight cars that's coming back, six of them will go to the new deputies, but they were still got, the other set of cars still coming from last year.
Correct. So Tahos are gonna be able to be distributed among these folks.
That's correct. So six cars, so just so y'all know, and I'm gonna tell Reuben, I'm gonna tell Darcy, that the sheriff will provide them with used Tahos as soon as we can get to it, as soon as we, he gets them in. And that's, I think, a fair thing, and I guess if there's any more trucks, David will take them.
Yeah. I just had one stolen.
Just what I hear. Was it one of those good trucks that you got?
It was our best truck.
It's always the best bowl.
The one with all the tools in it.
Was there anything in it?
Oh, yeah.
Full of tools?
Yeah. With a gas tank on the back and everything.
Did you find it?
Not yet.
Maybe not.
Do we have, do we have another truck coming in?
Yeah. Cut the lock on the gate.
Most important question for you. Is he's in it?
No.
Okay. So, so that's, in case you talk to Veteran Services or, oh, JP 1. JP 1 came in and asked for a full-time person to replace a part-time person who just got hired. I'm not inclined to give him a full-time person, because I think he doesn't have a workload for two people.
I think there's no doubt they do that.
So, so here's, here's where I bounced off of, I talked with Glenda this, about it, I've talked with Keith about it, I've talked with the sheriff about it, and one of the complaints that is a very valid complaint came from JP 1 is security at the courthouse. And that is a problem. So I talked to Judge Klaus, because the idea is, can we hire a person full-time at the courthouse that will basically work for him, but work down on the first floor, out of the commissioner's courtroom? Can we put, lock all the doors, can we have that person be the door monitor and work for JP 1? 2, 1. And then we have, and Randy said he could give that person a radio, in case, you know, some emergency came up, and these guys could run across, or whoever's...
Probably work in front door or where?
Front door of our old courthouse.
Are you talking about an administrative assistant working...
As a hall monitor type person. All that person would do is let people in and out, the doors could be locked all the way around, and that person, give him a computer, and while they won't be in his office, they will be doing his work. He's, he's mulling it over right now, it would, it would kill two birds with one stone, because we do need some kind of security over there.
Does that security person need some type of law enforcement, or is this a law enforcement person they have in mind?
Well, as I, when I was talking to Randy about it, I said, the other option is, we put a bailiff over there, well, that's, you know, a significantly higher cost, and we don't solve Judge Klaus's problem. If we do that, that means we still hire, still need to put that half-time person up there.
Well, like I said, with Phil coming into office another three and a half months or four months, I think it should be his call.
Yeah, I, he's thinking about it, but we still need to resolve the security.
Phil does have a point.
Yeah, well, I'm not worried about that, but he's, he's the guy that's coming in to replace Judge Klaus.
There is a runoff, not runoff, ahead of, in November.
He's, Phil will be there. Glenda?
The issue is, is we're gonna post a position, so if we post it at part-time, and then, you know, later it goes to full-time, it'd be easier to post it at full-time now and hire a full-time person.
Yeah. And the issue is that I don't think there's enough workload for a full-time, to justify a full-time person up there. But at the same time, this may be a way to solve, kill two birds with one stone.
And what door do you leave open, and where do you put this person, that they can monitor that door?
You have that west door as...
The west door.
The west door be open and you...
The west, well, actually, you don't even have it open. You have, you have that, any employee walking in and out of there has one of these. The only people they're monitoring is people that are walking in that aren't employees, like going to see the PEO or, or going to pay a ticket or a fine for JP 2 or JP 1. On, on days that they have court, there's usually a bailiff there, like CPS court.
So where would they be? They'd be in the hallway?
Well, that's...
Off that door?
We have a courtroom, or... Either inside of the JP, of the, of the old commissioner's courtroom, with the camera, Keith said we can install a camera and a doorbell pretty easily.
So anybody that does not have a pass key or swipe to get in, would ring the doorbell, and this person would be down there, working for Judge Klaus and go into the door?
That, that's the thought.
That's the idea.
Yeah.
I like the bailiff situation better.
You like the bailiff?
Well, yeah, of the things that could arise.
Yeah.
Agree on that.
Here's a, and I talked to Randy about that, I said, you know, Randy, if we hired a bailiff, it would be the worst position in the county to have, because that bailiff is gonna be sitting over there twiddling his thumbs about 90% of the time, because there really isn't that much activity, because it's, I mean, there's just not a lot of people going in and out of there. So a bailiff, full-time bailiff, and Randy even said, he said, I don't even know that my laziest people would wanna do that, because it's just, it'd be a horrible job.
It'd be a horrible job.
For, for somebody in law enforcement to sit over there every day.
It'd be somebody you give a job, but you're gonna hope next week don't show up.
And we have those people, so they're gonna...
There are some of those people?
No. I don't know, I'm just asking y'all for thoughts.
Well, I think, like Jerry's saying, if something's gonna happen, as a missionary assistant, couldn't be able to solve that problem.
No, they're gonna push a button, and they'll have a button, just like you have in law enforcement, it shouldn't be there, well, okay, I have a button. Huh?
If you push it, it'll be there within a minute.
If you push a button, they'll be there within a minute. So that person is, is a clerk-type person that's gonna be just a door monitor.
Anything will happen in a minute.
These guys are on, when you push it, they're gonna go running, Larry.
The worst way I can run with it, Bill.
They'll be there. I'm just, I'm, and let me, let me, let me give you a...
When they get there, it'll be over with.
I know, I know PD, when you push that button, I know PD is, is pretty responsible.
I'm here every day, I don't watch that.
I've seen them.
I think we're, I think we're probably taking a step backwards by not putting the bailiff over there. And the IRS twiddles on 979, there may be now be a, a part-time position, although it's full-time, but they shouldn't be compensated like a full-time deputy, because they don't do, but full-time deputies, they're basically a hall monitor, but they've got the ability to take care of the situation once it arrives, whereas the other, other one doesn't open the door, just goes in another room. That's just my opinion.
I'm okay with the idea, Judge Klaus is okay with it. If we could figure out how the buttons, the cameras, or whatever, they're getting up and going and opening the door, and somebody's there that they can assess that they're a threat, and punch the button, or if they let them in, and I just don't know the logistics of how it would...
They're really, they're really, visually, they really need to. They're, even if we have a camera and they're looking, for the most part, that means you're not gonna stare at it all the time, they're gonna be working.
Yeah.
So really, it's gonna be the doorbell, they hear the doorbell, they walk out, they let the person in. We have the buttons that are like under the desk, we also have, like, you're on like the land, you're like this.
Yeah.
So this person literally can have a button on them all the time. So if there was a threat at the door, then, you know, they have access to push the button immediately or whatever. So this person would, right now, we don't...
So this person would, right now, we don't have a goose in the building over there at all. There's no awareness of who's in that building for the most part. They just, we do. So this would give an opportunity. Would a bailiff be better? Well, it always does. I mean, if you want the person, but it's hard to say one minute from here. I mean, if, if the bailiff happens to be on the third floor, the threat's at the front door, I guarantee the people from here will be at the front door. By the time that guy can get from the third floor down to that floor.
But we also said our, our metal detectors. We, could we answer the door and have them go through the metal detector and that'd be part of their shooting?
Absolutely. But we have those detectors.
Is there one over?
It's leaning against the wall.
Metal detector over?
Yes. Yeah.
It's not plugged in.
Yeah, you know, think of the, the heat of the moment and not just been in that position, hopefully will never will be. Once this guy gets in, he opens the door for him, he looks like a normal guy. And then shooting starts, you don't have a minute.
No.
Especially with somebody with no experience whatsoever. And this person more likely, if not a bailiff, don't even carry a gun. Are we wide open for a lawsuit like that?
That's anywhere though.
Yeah.
That's, that's, yeah, anywhere that can happen. Once they're in.
Is anybody sitting in this room ever fought for their life?
I have.
Yeah.
Minutes, ten minutes, months. And I, I don't.
So, we have routes here. Route one is we wanna hire a bailiff and we give Judge Klaus a part-timer. Or two is a hall monitor.
Are the bailiffs that hold up on the part-timer tools?
Phil is done.
Change.
Or, I'm sorry, Phil, the next judge should get done.
He said he got a part-time in the budget.
It's going to be, he's got a part-time position in the budget. It's already there. It's already in the budget.
Does he have a full-time person as well?
Mm-hmm. One full-time person as well.
And they both in the office?
No.
No.
No. That's part of the problem.
Well.
His full-time person isn't very full-time.
So then, some adjustments would be made if he wasn't?
Yes.
And we made that, made a bailiff a full-time and, uh, make his full-time person a full-time person?
His, he's, he needs to have that full-time person there, full-time.
And his full-time person, no, ain't there a full-time?
That's the problem.
That needs to change, I guess.
It does.
I think that just needs.
Glenda liked talking about this at her meeting.
So, what, what's y'all's pleasure?
I say we hire a full-time bailiff and let him solve this problem internally.
Okay.
That's my.
That was kinda giving the option of solving this full-time problem internally.
Okay. I will, Ruby, just, uh, put that in there. We will budget for a full-time bailiff over there.
For a good value, forty mile value?
Fifty-two.
Or less?
Fifty. Say it's fifty. With benefits. And Judge Klaus goes to have part-time. Now, I, I talked to him this morning about the hall monitor scenario. If he comes back to me and says that will work, then we all. Huh? Which, what, it won't work?
Well, if it didn't, it works.
Well, I'm just telling you what these guys have told me.
Go in, lock the doors and just make it one thing, one.
Yes.
And then is it possible?
Keith can lock them from his phone, can't he?
We probably still need to do that even more.
Yeah.
That's how, that's how we're able to control who's going in and out of the building.
And is it possible for people who are, are we have people coming in here trying to give a check to the JP courts?
Do what?
Do we have people coming in here to pay their tickets and give them?
That's what hap- that's usually the traffic.
That's what I'm saying. If, if you had the camera out there, couldn't they could just say what you're there for? Couldn't you put a lockbox up there for them to draw up their check?
Anybody could tell you that's what they're there for. Anybody could tell you that's what they're there for.
Well, no, they say, hey, I, I need to pay my ticket. What is it? And you tell them, you have the camera and you tell them, what's this? And you have a lockbox there. So they don't have to come into your building.
The problem with committing to some, I mean, at some point, somebody's not gonna be there.
Yeah.
And that's the other thing with the bailiff, at least, you know, if the door's gonna be open, his job will be there, but if somebody is not gonna be there for a few minutes. Go in the restroom?
Yeah.
I mean, at that, I mean, at, at some point, somebody's not there.
But we do as much as we can for the time somebody is there. I don't do it all. I don't.
I would, I would say that if we have a bailiff full-time there, sitting out in the hallway, then still lock those two doors and make everybody come in that one door.
But that door would be unlocked.
That's correct.
The person would come free to in and out, but he's paying.
And we got a bailiff sitting there.
We need to close the door.
Alright.
Pass it over to the restroom. Yes, it's gonna be on agenda for a couple of minutes, but he's gonna be right back. But it, I mean, that's a lot better for a couple of minutes here and there than.
Agreed.
Judge is like, let's go on, put two extra doors in her new office so nobody gonna have it. Door order.
Okay, good. Alright.
Could the salary from that position be reflected with the duties?
We could.
He's not going to be, uh, assigned in murder cases. He's not gonna be controlling, he's not gonna be, whatever I think it's anyway. But he's not gonna be out in field.
I, I think we, is that, is that, I don't know how the sheriff pays him right now. Are the bailiffs paid the same, Ruby? Bailiffs are pretty much the same as everybody else? Yeah.
He's gonna be, he's gonna be interchangeable, guys are having a hero soon.
And, and, and that could happen. Cause he is gonna, I mean, the sheriff may rotate him.
So it'd be hard.
A week, you get a week over there and learn how to play solitaire.
That, that's why they put a detention over there.
Yeah, it's for the bad guy. You make me mad at him, maybe he's.
We don't have to give him, we don't have to give him a vehicle or do it.
No. Okay, so that's settled for JP, for the courthouse of JP one, right?
Hey, on, uh, election, remember Ruby came in asking if he was part-time or full-time?
Yes, I didn't do that. I didn't. And the only reason why is, I, I think, when he's busy, he's got funds to hire help, extra help, but, but if you have another full-time person over there, I, I, I don't know, Glenda and I talked about it. I, I just, I didn't do it.
You got.
I think he's still. He's got money to hire for, for help if he needs to. And, and so during off times like right now, you know, it's pretty slow. It's just during elections and election years, next year it's gonna be slow again, cause, so I, I, I kind of.
We'd rather be both clear.
Until this fall, it's gonna be busy and then it'll be slow again until, uh, probably two years next, uh.
I think the finance of the bailiff hiring people.
Yeah, just, it's there. He's got that money to do that. Sheriff, if y'all remember, the sheriff went through a list. Uh, he was, he wanted to have six deputies, a pre, uh, uh, a patrol clerk, a dispatcher, maintenance, change his rank structure, and have a new animal control officer and have a new maintenance person and have a I T person. So I, and he ranked them in the order of most important to him. So I, I put in everything but the new I T person and the new animal control person. Uh, I've talked to the sheriff, told him that's, this is what I think we can do and, and he's okay with it. Uh, but that's still significant, what we did to, uh, help him out. The maintenance person, Keith and I talked about the maintenance person coming on. And Albert currently does this building, Melissa's building, the, the old courthouse and every, he's got a compound here. Sheriff, uh, Mr. Garcia takes care of the jail and the sheriff's office and, uh, the building next door. Uh, that, where he used, where, uh, no, actually Albert takes care of pre-trial. And he takes care of, uh, yeah, pre-trial and, and both of them, juvenile probation. So, and the sheriff's okay with this, bringing on a third maintenance man, but share him. Between, cause we just bought that building and, and in two years, we're gonna be on that building too. And, and so a third person, but sheriff between here and over there and Mr. Garcia and Albert are just gonna have to figure out how to, keep him busy and, and, but I think it, sheriff's okay with that. And he thinks it'll work and we may, uh, just to help out because of these buildings, get them to bid on cutting the grass over there. Mr. Garcia cuts the grass. So when we go out for bids, we may just see what they would charge us to cut that grass and take that work off of it.
Speaking of grass, can we fill in the ruts over there?
What ruts?
The old courthouse.
Oh, they put in those windows and took, are they, did they put ruts in it?
Yeah.
I didn't, I haven't been there. Well, I'm sure they've smashed their water system too. They didn't use boards at all, did they? So, we got a problem. I, I guess we'll have to look at it. Okay. So that is the sheriff. What do y'all think of that?
We didn't talk to Randy much about this, real life, the, the single column town command. And one, the inefficiency of that. And I don't, that's still, with these two legislators in the cabinet, it's still like that.
I talked to them, uh, he, I had, just him and I had a visit about it because I was asking that same concern. Gilbert's the chief deputy. And, and Gilbert's got a lot of involvement in, in the administration side of it.
Yeah.
And, and Gilbert would still be in charge of that captain, but the captain would be in the personnel end of it.
That's when it starts to split.
It starts splitting, yeah. And Gilbert apparently, uh, and he does, he's, he's got, he's pretty much wears a lot of hats in his job, doing what he does. That's.
And Chris is, Chris is basically administrative?
Chris handles dispatch, jail, and something else.
Well, I was, they give him another, another something.
He, he had three things going on over on his end.
What is Chris?
Chris, he's, he's not in that. He's over on the jail side. Okay. Any other questions on that? Now, you saw the, the negative seven hundred and seven thousand is what he comes out at. Obviously, y'all, we've done this before. Uh, we won't know. I've, I've kept, I think I kept our revenues very conservative. That number I hope will get smaller. If you look under the four oh seven account, you'll see Ruby broke out, those areas where we keep extra money sitting there, if y'all remember, that's how we do it. And in the expenses on four oh seven, if you look on the home screen, just so you can, uh, kinda see, that number doesn't look so bad. Go to page, uh, page six. And, and when you look at, look at, go to page, top of page seven, under the contracts line, uh, other is a hundred and four thousand. It, I'm on page seven at the top of the page. And, and, and so basically, if you go back to page six, that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contracts, you see that? Budgeted number? Right below it, then Ruby broke, breaks out, what's in that four hundred and fifty thousand? So it's Castro building posted, the Henness, all of your party department elections, Go Medina, H T S. That's what we all budget for, but then you also see that other line where it's a hundred and four thousand? That's extra. Out of that four hundred and fifty thousand, that's a hundred thousand dollars that is not budgeted or earmarked. So then you drop down to the next one, uh, miscellaneous. You see where miscellaneous is? Look at other, there's a hundred and eighteen thousand in miscellaneous there. You got following? So that's, so that's two hundred and thirty-two thousand now. And then you go down to, uh, let's see, there was another line that I was somewhere, I thought. Which one?
Other services, what we ended up doing, there was some money that we had under other, however, we went ahead and threw in the ag group.
Yeah.
As a rough estimate of what H T S gave us several months ago.
Yeah.
And so that's the amount, of course, that changes.
And that's, so, yeah, under other expenses, you got a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. You see that? So you add that to the two hundred and thirty-two, we're now at right under four hundred thousand of extra in, in the four oh seven account. And then if y'all remember, every one of y'all, y'all have capital outlays. We have it in the Honda buildings and grounds. We have it in Castro. We have it in Divine and y'all rarely ever spend it and that's probably another two or three hundred thousand. When you take all of it together. So, so what I did do on this budget, just so y'all know, uh, I adjusted up everywhere, I think in Divine building and ground, in the sheriff's office, in this buildings and grounds, because this is a new building and we are still wondering what it's gonna cost to operate it. So wherever we were behind on expenses today, because we have been in this building since October one and we started, I, I just, I went ahead and up that expense item just because it's, you know, we, 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 we need to, we're gonna, and, and we're gonna be doing this for years, trying to figure out as we bring on these other buildings and stuff like that, it's, uh, you just gotta up it to see, make sure we cover it. And, and if everybody in this county does what they always do and come in under budget, they'll give back six or eight hundred thousand, cause everybody does it. Everybody comes in under budget. That's great.
And these numbers include all of these items and the five percent?
That's correct. That covers everything. And my hope is the first number on the first page, seventeen point one million, will be higher than that. Because that was a, of, an estimate and I won't know what that number will be until, until John Ed is through with, with all of his stuff and, uh, and Melissa's given me her numbers. Any questions? See if I covered all my notes. Oh. Glenda and I is working on, on something right now that I will just tell you, there's gonna be, so there's minor discrepancies like, three people that have been in JP offices around the county for fifteen to twenty years. Uh, they're, they're all within fifteen cents of each other and, and we're gonna adjust so they're all being paid the same because it's, for whatever reason. Oh, and, and we're going to take that one, the sheriff made the comment about his, admin staff making less than the D P S people?
Thirty-nine cents.
Thirty-nine cents an hour. We're gonna adjust that. And, and I'm gonna tell you what happened. Do you remember when we gave out raises? And we did merit raises? And, and the D P S officer gave one more than the other and then, of course, he was gone and the next one comes in and they're complaining cause they're, they're off, so we, that's, that, that's what caused that.
They were all the same at one time.
Everybody was the same at one time. Till we did the merit and.
That's what merit is.
It was.
It was and, and it just, just didn't come through very well, so.
And there's two other things during the workshop, is I think Jan had asked for a part-time. I'm not sure you went, might want to check that out. And Melissa had asked for.
Melissa wanted raises for her people.
And herself.
And herself. Oh, and I did, Melissa is correct. Melissa's got three offices in this county and, uh, so I, I did give her, and she, she manages more people than probably anybody in this county with, with those three offices. I did raise her mileage. I didn't give her, I, I kept, all elected officials at the same, but I think I raised her mileage fifteen hundred dollars.
How's that?
Is that right with y'all? Okay, fifteen hundred? Ruby, is that what I did? Thank you. I, I'm glad you brought that up because I did forget about that part.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that'll, uh, kinda, and I, and I don't have any issues with that because she does probably manage more people than we do. Okay, David, you gotta go?
No.
Oh, I thought you said you, you want to clock here or something?
Just leaving the note.
Okay.
Playing my day.
And Keith? And Keith has gotten Curtis, no, Chuck Tunder is going to clean up. Is he gonna clean the whole lot up and for that, or is that just hauling off the rocks?
We're gonna, we're gonna work on the, on the, on the canal.
Yeah, all the big, all the rocks and.
So that would be, uh, in, in that, oh, the other thing that, that the sheriff talked to us about, and it's gonna be on the next agenda, to be thinking about, do y'all remember him talking about LiveSpot? LiveSpot is that app you can download and it's a twenty-six thousand dollar bill to pay for all the employees at the school districts. And the sheriff has already sent four of his people in to be trained on it, I talked to the guy yesterday from LiveSpot. I talked with the Hondo ISD superintendent, Dr. Trulock. And, and she is gonna take it upon herself to get all the other superintendents on board, cause she thinks they're all on board, but I said, I need to get them organized. So, but I, I think, uh, I'm gonna have.
She gonna contact everybody.
She'll contact her cohorts, because they all have been presented. They've all been presented with, uh, with this deal and, and so on the next agenda, and I, we've got money sitting still from COVID, that COVID money that came in, ninety-eight thousand dollars, we've got, and I think, uh, I'm gonna see if you guys will approve us paying for it for all school districts. It'll be twenty-six thousand on official one. And in, in the app, as you remember, if a teacher's got it on their phone, they push a button, uh, it immediately goes to all the sheriff, all law enforcement, to, to let them know there's emergency. I would also suggest to y'all, once we learn about it, the guy's gonna be here the first week of August to do some demos, if y'all wanna be a part of it, but it, also it can be used in your churches and, and things like that, but, uh, but I, we'll learn more about it.
Hey, Joe, on, on, we talked about our allowances.
About what?
Our two order allowances we get.
Yes.
I want to be mine up to fifteen hundred and Barry's up to fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just run a short numbers on this and go on with the new IRS stuff that the order office sent out to us at the Molly joint. Last week, when I changed my oil, in three years, I owned that truck for three years, I put eighty-one thousand miles on it and that truck has not left Medina County. It has never went on a conference, never went on anything. With that being said, our fifteen nine cents, that'd have been forty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. On the other side, we've collected thirty-six thousand. And that's not counting tire and batteries and everything else going along with it.
Seventy-odd.
I'm, I put on eighty-one thousand in three years and that truck is one hundred percent work.
Right now, we all do our own, I mean, we're not, we're not uniform across.
You're not.
The board, we all just do our own, so you can ask for what you.
Okay, I think we talked about it, we've raised it up to fifteen hundred from a thousand a month. So that, 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 that there would break me even with what I'm putting on now. And you gotta realize, this last three years, my driving has been down, way down. During COVID and all that stuff, I mean, I, I, I never left my office or the house, the crew did all the work. So if it wouldn't have been for that, I would have went over, generally I put in the last year before that, over a hundred thousand every three years, cause I get a new truck every three years, I went down to get one last week, there are new trucks.
Well, you can wait for one.
Wait a year.
Where's, where's your truck at?
It may not come.
Didn't I hear you that it?
It was supposed to be here three weeks ago, I think I moved out that class meeting and they cleared it off production, oh, said it may not be built this year.
Oh, wow. Okay. From, from that perspective, you guys tell Ruby, what, if y'all are changing, y'all's make the change so we can get that into, uh.
That comes out of the own budget.
No, but it's part of, we gotta publish it.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I gotta know today what everybody's gonna be doing, so you got these two, y'all, you guys, are y'all gonna, gonna make the change also, or? Seventy-odd.
Somebody's going to own budget.
Could you get nine hundred or nothing? Or seventy?
I get seven hundred right now and I upped it to ten. I would, that's eighty-four hundred a year, I upped it to ten, but I'm, because that may not pay for the people, by itself.
Don't be tempted, just do it so we can get it over with.
I'm gonna make it, let's make it twelve.
Okay.
If I'm going from.
Twelve thousand or twelve hundred?
Twelve thousand.
A year.
A year.
They told us you're gonna get it.
Ruby, you got that? And Commissioner Beck?
Do you think your new commissioner will be driving a whole lot more or?
Better as a lawyer too, I mean, there was one.
Well, let me, let me talk with Danny.
Okay, would you do me a favor and just get with Ruby once you talk? Okay, I appreciate that.
Well, let me see, I, I assume that.
Huh? No, it becomes part of the salary. It becomes, it becomes part of the nothing.
Yes, that's right.
Salary, so no, I, I, I need to, I need to know it, and, and be, look, it doesn't have to be, what's the, Tuesday?
Yeah.
Just tell us by Friday, y'all figured it out, because Jennifer needs to publish it.
I'll do it.
Okay. So.
I did the math when I got elected, based on what my predecessor had in that line item. And I did the math after a few months and went, you know what, that's hitting pretty close to what I'm spending. But that was fourteen years ago and I was driving a little Ford Ranger, which.
I remember that Ranger.
Things have changed.
Yes, they have. All right, well, hey, thank you guys. We will just set another meeting once I know where John Ed's at.
Where number is it supposed to be?
Twenty-six?
I said I've got people going to protest next week.
I think it's the twenty-sixth, or the twenty-ninth.
I didn't get it, but I think they said they told people what kind of race you got. And you know what the best part about it is, I would drive should walk through the room.
Really?
I don't know, yeah.
Well.
That's, that's why I want to get on the board.
You have, uh, who is on the board from down there? You know what I wanna do? I don't wanna, I don't wanna do anything.
Well, evidently they don't do anything anyway.
I know Joey Jacob coming from there.
Tim, Tim, Tim is the chairman of the board and, uh, well, you know, he, Tim, three, it's time for other people to step up.
He's having a war with the one where.
Well, they, and Jay Gruber, I think is getting off, cause he's on it. And you said Navarro from Divine, and there's somebody from, like Natalia. And I think Jeff Gauz is on it, is our appointed first inning? Or did we appoint somebody?
I think Clay Bell.
Clay Bell. Clay Bell's on it.
Maybe two days, I don't know.
You won't cause them any trouble, will you?
No, they'll talk with the board. And making sure it is horrible, like.
Okay.